All right, my clock says 5:30. We will call the meeting to order. Sorry for the quick determination of a corner.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, we have a form. One person is absent.
Right group with allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with an approval of the agenda. Item number two. Just to let you know, because the change was made just this morning, during the closed session, we added superintendent evaluation as a discussion item in addition to negotiations. So I wanted to make you aware of that for the agenda. Otherwise, I won't entertain a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add one agenda item.
Okay.
And that is to recognize Jason Engelbreit as a state school board member.
Would you suggest putting that on a recognitions and awards item?
3C. You just really want to make this awkward.
No, I think we should have it as an action item.
Separate item altogether.
Separate discussion. No, any recognition and.
Any recognitions, okay. So I'll consider that a motion to approve the agenda as shown with the additional item 3C.
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This brings us to item number three, recognitions and awards. We'll start with the healthy high school challenge award. Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, and we have a couple of folks up here. I don't know if Tim, if you want to come up and summarize real quickly what that is, but another congratulations to our food service for another award that they have received.
Thank you. Yes, we were fortunate enough to win first place for our combo meals, which is selling the most reimbursable meals for percentage of our students. So we went first place for that out of 220 schools that participated across the country. So SADEX actually awards us $2,500 to do with as we wish, which we are working now to form a student group to start to work towards kind of maybe redesigning our cafeteria a little bit, adding some seats and making it a little more warmer and friendlier. So $2,500, the check's in the mail, so it'll be coming soon, and we look forward to making some changes with that.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats. That brings us to item 3B, Faribault Middle School Avid Highly Certified Site.
And this is another award, a great award. Heidi is back there. I was wondering if Heidi, if you don't mind coming up and talking a little bit about that, but Heidi's our Avid coordinator and has done just an outstanding job with our program. So maybe you can talk a little bit about what this award is about.
Sure. To be highly certified in Avid, there's a system where we evaluate ourselves on 11 essentials that Avid has across the board. And so our middle school met highly certified, which is kind of one step under being a demonstration school for Avid. To reach demonstration school status, there's a lot of work ahead for us, but I think they can certainly do that at the middle school. So I'd really like to thank not only the site team at the middle school, the Avid site team, but the principals and everyone there for supporting us. They're doing a great job and they have some great goals for moving ahead, too. And the high school was just certified. Avid had just got, received that in the mail, too, today, so.
Thank you very much. Congrats. That brings us to item 3C. I'm just going to turn that over to you, Jerry.
Well, I'll turn it over to the superintendent to talk a little bit about this, but it is an honor to work with somebody as Jason's caliber. This is one of seven people in the state of Minnesota that have been nominated for the state school board. To my recollection, we've only had one other person in the history of Faribault. I don't go quite back to the beginning of the district, but far enough back where we had one other person who was nominated and received the honor of being the state board representative. So Jason, or me personally, thank you for your service. It's a very much deserved recognition for the leadership that you've offered this school board and this school district. So I extend my personal congratulations and professional gratulations to you.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
And I would echo that same opinion, and I hope everybody can find a little bit of time in January at the MSBA conference to come celebrate Jason's award. And it's just remarkable to have a nomination like this, to get an award as prestigious as what this is, one of the seven board members across the state is Jason, and he's being awarded for this nice award. The leadership meeting, which is, do you know what the dates are?
January 14.
January 14. On Thursday. At a luncheon, right?
Luncheon Monday.
Terrific.
Well, thank you both. I looked at the agenda and specifically thought I was not going to be putting this off this evening, but I guess mostly what I wanted to say was how much of a privilege it's been working with this board for the last seven years. The number of boards that I've worked with have all been remarkable people to work with. I think personally, I was more flattered by the nomination than even the award, because I know it takes effort and energy on the part of people in this district to put together a nomination. It's not a small amount of work, and so I thank you, all of those involved in that process, for taking the time. That meant a great deal to me, and it was probably the first time I called to tell my wife something about the board, and she apparently knew well ahead of me. And so I didn't get that opportunity to surprise her with this, so she was part of the collusion. But again, it's a complete privilege to work with this group of folks, and I thank you very much for taking the time to recognize me in this way.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on, community comment. This is a time for members of the community to come and share their thoughts and concerns with the board. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. I recognize a lot of faces, so I don't think there's anyone, but I always want to be a little patient, just in case I'm wrong. All right, seeing none, we will move ahead with the agenda, on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is our items which are not subject to debate by the board, and they're taken with one motion, but any item can be removed at the request of any board member. Are there any items any board members would like to remove at this time? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. There is no discussion on this item. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself. Aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes 6-0.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just a comment. I knew that Jeannie Brown Kressel could not stay away from the classroom long, so it's good to have her back here. She's come back. For a short period of time.
Which brings us then to item six, curriculum, starting with a report from the curriculum committee.
Good evening. Our curriculum committee met on Monday, November 16th. We had a guest speaker in, Dr. Jill Watson. She is a leader in the Mini T-Sol and SLIF arena, and she came in to talk to us about the brand-new LEAPs Act, the brand-new LEAPs Act that has gone into effect this school year, in which our staff needs to take some training in the ELL arena. And the act also ensures that we have quality teachers within the classroom. And so there's another component that hasn't totally been explained to us, but apparently there'll be some data collection that goes along with this ELL act. And so once we know more about that, Dr. Jill Watson will come in and help us with that. The other thing that we did at the curriculum committee was the World's Best Workforce. We talked about the goals, and we have those this evening for your approval, so that we can post the World's Best Workforce on our website as required by MDE. And that was pretty much our whole curriculum meeting. Any questions?
I'll just add something. So I've had a couple of requests that the board discuss concerns. There's some parents with concerns about apps on the new iPads and how they're being managed, and I had suggested that prior to having that. It's a board discussion, it should be a curriculum committee discussion. There was a technology item on that agenda, and we got delayed and didn't get to it at the last curriculum meeting. So Colleen and I talked, and it's going to be near the top of the next curriculum agenda. So sorry for that delay. That's why it wasn't discussed, and we'll make sure, Colleen and I will make sure that it does soon and that we get it to the board and have that discussion, because I think there's a variety of people with that interest.
But speaking on that topic, I think the middle school, I'm not sure about the high school, but I did receive an email with regards to the middle school, and they did tweak their policy a bit, so now if there's one failing grade, the apps and the games are suspended. Is that accurate?
Yes, I believe so. Yes, they were in discussion about that, but I do think they've moved into that.
Is the high school the same way, or just the middle school?
I don't think so. I don't think there are any parameters yet for the high school.
No, the high school is, you know, we're kind of looking at the middle school as possibly a pilot situation to see, you know, what effect, what does the data show that says this really has effect on our students? We kind of went back and forth and talked, you know, talked about whether or not we should make that move. As you know, when kids, you know, transition between eighth grade into ninth grade, you tend to see higher amounts of Fs, and so the conversation is, should be much larger than just the iPad situation. And we've been working on that and looking at possibilities of what we could do for our ninth grade students as they move into the high school. So a little bit more work. Thank you.
Any other questions for Colleen? Thank you very much, Colleen. No report on technology this evening, which brings us to policy. There was a meeting on November 10th. Is there anyone from policy who would like to update us, or should we simply go into the policy items?
They're pretty much legislative changes, so.
Okay. All right, we'll just simply move along. So we have three policy items. Item 7B, policies 501, weapons policy, policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students, and policy 526, hazing prohibition. These three policies are in front of us this evening for a first reading, for anybody who might be watching this at home, so that I can explain. When the board considers policies, we first do it in two, we do it in two steps. The first is a first reading, where it comes before the board for us to look at it and ask any questions, and then it can come back to the board at a second time for action on the part of the board to adopt that policy. So these items, 501, 509, and 526, are in front of us this evening simply for discussion. Are there any questions on these items? So are these all items, these are all policies that we currently have, and these are updates?
Yes.
Reflecting law? Are there any questions? Hearing none, please take your time to look at those over the next month. If you have any further questions, you can bring it to the policy committee or to Todd directly. They'll be back next month for us to adopt them. That then brings us to item 7C, approval of the following policies for second reading, policy 536, special education records and records retention policy, policy 406, public and private personnel data, policy 410, family and medical leave, policy 413, harassment and violence, policy 419, tobacco-free environment. I'll ask because somebody brought this to my attention just recently. Could you remind me, policy 536, the special education records and records retention policy? There are many times where adults who are in special education need some records for services that they're asking for later on. How is that addressed with families? Is there a default for whether or not we keep those? So just how does a family go from their child in education to keeping whatever records they might need for that child as an adult?
Yes, so after our discussion, the last time the policy was brought up, we changed it to include that we would keep the last IEP and special education evaluation in portuity with their cumulative file. So we're going to keep that, so that if they do request those records, we'll have those available.
Okay.
And that's typically what social services asks for, is typically the last, for colleges, it's the last IEP, because that contains an accommodation section, so that they could get the accommodations that they got in high school in college if they're available. And for social services, it's usually the evaluation report and the last IQ that they had before they exited high school.
Other questions on any of the policies? Would there be any objections to addressing all of these policies with one motion? Hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to adopt policy 536, special education records and records retention policy, policy 406, public and private personnel data, policy 410, family and medical leave, policy 413, harassment and violence, and policy 419, tobacco-free environment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the named policies. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With the adoption of new policies, we need to rescind the old policies. So I'll read those, and then I will entertain a motion to rescind all of the policies with one motion. So I will entertain a motion to rescind policy 536, special education records and records retention policy adopted September 21st, 2015. Policy 406, public and private personnel data adopted November 21st, 2011. Policy 410, family and medical leave adopted February 28th, 2011. Policy 413, harassment and violence adopted July 22nd, 2013. And policy 419, tobacco-free environment that was adopted February 27th, 2012. I would entertain a motion to rescind those.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on these items? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This then brings us to item eight, finance, beginning with item 8A, finance committee report. Is there a report from the finance committee this evening? Adam Treger?
Well, we will approve several of the items that, or we will look at approving the items that were discussed at the finance committee, but I guess we should briefly discuss the Crusader marching band proposal that was discussed at the committee. I think the board might have been aware, last finance committee, the Crusader marching band was asking for some funding to assist with transportation to their events, and I would ask Todd certainly to speak to the issue that we cannot contribute towards that, because they are technically not a school district marching band at this point. Maybe you want to clarify that.
Nope, that's all clear. Yep.
Obviously, people on the finance committee, community members are very supportive of this band. It's an amazing band. So at that previous committee, we had discussed the school district investing in a marching band going forward, funding a marching band, taking that on as a school activity going forward. So we asked the marching band staff to present a budget and what that would look like to the finance committee, and they did an excellent job, as they do on all things, I guess, bringing together a budget. And I do have it with me, I should have looked at this, but going forward, the cost, projected cost, I should say, for a marching band, to add that back into our budget, could be upwards to about $241,000. Is that right? I should get my notes back there.
I think that's over the first two years, I think.
First two years. So that is quite a budget item for us to consider. So we didn't think, the discussion was, it wouldn't make sense to do it partially, or to somehow say, we want them to be a Faribault School District marching band, but not agree to that funding level. So really, we would need to make a decision as a board and a school district going forward that we want a marching band, we want that item in our budget going forward, so that we would look at it actually in the budgeting process coming up, if that's something the board would like them to do. I think that's what we discussed, that they would, again, bring this issue to our attention with their budget and their proposal going forward. So we did vote on that, and the finance committee did not approve giving them any additional funds or going forward at this time with them being incorporated into this district again. Questions? There's Richard and Chad, are there, obviously, if other board members have questions about that, or if there's anything you want to add?
No, I think you did a good job.
So just so I'm clarifying, so we can expect to see this back as an item when we're looking at the budgeting process for next year? This will be an item for us to discuss?
Yes.
Whether or not we want to support that in the larger budget discussion?
Okay.
Any other questions for the finance committee before we move into the items here? All right, hearing none, we will start with the audit report.
Good evening. We have Kim Hilberg here tonight from Clifton, Larson, Allen, and she's going to present the audit report. And I just want to also recognize that Andy Johnson, our controller, is also here, so if we have any questions, we can call her up. But she's the one that's responsible for this and does all the work around it, so I want to just thank her publicly for that, too. So, Kim.
Good evening for having me here this evening to go through audit results with you. We have a PowerPoint presentation to go through, and prior to that, we're just going to discuss a handful of housekeeping items related to audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2015. We issued what's called a clean or an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, so no change from what we've previously done in the past. We did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we noted as a result of the audits. We did not have any significant journal entries that we proposed, nor did we have anything in terms of financial reporting aspects that were material. So I think it just speaks very highly of your finance department. And not only the work that they do in preparing for the audit itself, but the work that they do throughout the year in terms of their policies, procedures, all of those types of things. We did a federal grant audit this year. You spent about $3.5 million worth of federal funds in fiscal 15, and we tested the Title I program as well as the Child Nutrition Cluster. We had two minor findings there, more or less just kind of housekeeping items, nothing there that I would say would be a systematic issue by any means. And then in terms of the legal compliance and student activity aspect of the audit, we did not have any findings for either of those items as well. So clean, a pretty clean report for the district. One thing I'm going to highlight is the new accounting standard that took place during fiscal 15 related to the statewide pension plans that the district participates in. PERA and TRA are the two statewide plans that you currently participate in, and the new accounting guidance requires that all of the participating governmental entities report their proportionate share of the unfunded pension liability. So all these statewide plans across the country are underfunded, and now the guidance says that, you know, previously you just recorded on your financial statements whatever you contributed in any one given year. Now they're saying, no, you need to recognize your piece of the liability. It is not on your fund statements, it does not impact fund balance, it's on the entity-wide financial statements. The end of the year, your proportionate share for the two plans combined is $23.6 million. So that's PERA and TRA combined. Now you are not required to repay that over a period of time like it, as if it were bonded debt. That would take place through employer contributions and employee contributions throughout the remaining working lives of all of the people that participate in those plans, as well as any investment earnings from the investments in each of those plans that they use to generate funds. So that's kind of the big change this year in terms of accounting guidance for not only school districts, but governments really across the country. With that being said, we're actually going to move into the financial aspect of the audit. We're going to talk a little bit more about fund balances now as we go through the remainder of the PowerPoint presentation. The first slide we have is the operating results of the general fund for the year ended June 30th, 2015. You can see in total fund balance, closed out the year on the right, just let alone under $11.5 million from the previous year. As we move to the left, we have various components of fund balance with your capital, items being deferred maintenance, health and safety, and operating capital. We do have separate slides for those, so I'll talk about those individually.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is it possible to blow that up? It's very difficult to see from this distance.
No. Sorry.
Did you, is it on, or did you put the attachment? Or does it?
Not.
The 104 pages.
104 pages, so it's going to be difficult for us to separate. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Yep, I'll kind of go through each number to explain, to give you a better perspective on that. The non-capital restricted items, which would be the column second from the left, would be solely just staff development dollars, so that $101,000 is money that is remaining for staff development to be used in future years. The far-left column in this is actually made up of three different components. So at the close of the year, that total for that far-left is a little over $11 million. And of that $11 million, 1.1 million of it is related to what we call non-spendable fund balance. So those are prepayments for things that you actually paid in 15 that relate to fiscal 16. So it's more or less just a timing difference. Those are things that are not easily converted into cash, so it's required to sit as what we would call non-spendable fund balance. And that is an increase from what you previously had in years past, more or less due to a timing of when things came in and when payment was due versus having them for the following fiscal year. You do have $2.5 million sitting in what we call committed fund balance for severance, and I think that's good financial planning on the district's part, because you are going to have severance payments as you have retirees throughout the subsequent years. And to just set money aside and recognize that you're going to be paying that out is really fiscally prudent to do so. So the remaining fund balance, then, is what we call your unassigned fund balance. And that's sitting just a little under $7.5 million at the close of the year. You'll notice a little bit of a decrease from the previous year, and that isn't due to a spend-down by any means, it's really a reclassification. I spoke earlier of the increase in that non-spendable fund balance, it was about $700,000 from the previous year. That came out of this component of fund balance. So in a sense, what that fund balance rose was directly related to this decrease, and once that non-spendable fund balances what we would call relieved or released, it will fall back into this particular component of fund balance. So it's more or less just taking money out of one bucket and putting it in another in terms of the actual classification. Of the $7.5 million, if we divide that by the annual expenditures in the general fund, we come up with a percentage of 15.2 percent. We use that as a means to measure the overall health of the general fund, if you will. We recommend anywhere between 8 and 16 percent, so about one to two months' worth of operations to give you a good cushion there for fund balance. So you are definitely well within that, and your general fund continues to be healthy. Here's just a summary of the percentages of the general fund fund balance for each respective year relative to those annual expenditures. And as I mentioned earlier, 2015 is right at 15.2. Your restricted fund balance, as I mentioned earlier, that $101,000 is really stacked of development dollars that you can be using in future years for that specific purpose. Otherwise, your district does a very good job of spending all those restricted monies from the state in the given year that you actually receive it. Operating capital fund balance is next. Not a whole lot of change, pretty consistent if we actually look back through 2011 for this particular component. Health and safety is next, ends this year in a deficit, which is not all that uncommon when we start looking at this particular component of fund balance. And when we look at where you've been to where you are now, the deficit of about $87,000 is what I would consider pretty close to break even. It's really hard to hit this one on the nose every year, because you're incurring various costs and getting levy authority a couple of years later on down the road. So you're pretty close to hitting it right on the nose here in 2015. Your food service fund balance continues to look good. This is one area that I always like to look at in addition to your community service fund balance that we're going to be looking at in the next slide. If either of those two funds are having a difficult time being self-sustaining, it's the general fund that has to subsidize those through transfers. But that's definitely not the case here. Your food service fund continues to operate in a self-sufficient manner. Community service fund balance is next, and this, too, continues to operate self-sufficiently. Of the $609,000, you have about four or five different components of fund balance that total that $609,000, none of which are deficits. I just want to highlight that, because I work with a lot of districts where that's not always the case. There's sometimes one of those elements that's in the red, if you will, and requires some attention by the district if that were to occur, but that's definitely not the situation here. Capital project fund balance is next. This one can really vary depending upon when you issue debt versus when you're spending down the proceeds on the various projects that you have in any one given year. At the close of the year, you have about $3.4 million left to spend in fiscal 16 related to the capital projects. Debt service fund balance is next, pretty typical for what we've seen in the past with your district in terms of your closing balance in 2015. in terms of your closing balance in 2015. The anomaly in 2012 was because you had refunding bonds that took place in, in that one particular year. So you had money set aside in escrow and about $5.5 million that later got paid out the following year. So that, that looks a little odd in that one year. Your general fund revenue pie chart is next, and I always use this as a means to emphasize how very dependent you are upon the state for funding, especially in that general fund. So any change in terms of what they pay you, how often they pay you, has a huge impact on that general fund. Your revenue pie chart looks more typical for what you would have in any one given year. If you were to compare this to last year, your property tax percentage was significantly lower and your state aid was significantly higher. In 2014, the state paid back what they call the tax shift through a payment of state aid of about $1.3 million. So it really shifted the pieces of the pie relative to one another. But this is more typical for what you would see in any one fiscal year in terms of the distribution of your funding in your general fund. And then the next one that we have is your actual ADMs, your seat counts for each year going back through 2011. You can see in 2015, you had a nice bump up in your student counts, which we know is important because a lot of your funding is, is enrollment-driven. So in closing, financially, the district looks healthy. Compliance-wise, there wasn't anything there that I would consider to be a, a red flag or a warning sign. Your, your finance department does a fine job of, like I mentioned earlier, not only preparing for the audit, but, but going through the very, the policies and procedures throughout the year as well.
How many districts does Larson, Clifton Larson Allen audit?
Firm-wide, in the state of Minnesota, we, we probably do about, I'd say, 25 to 30 percent of the, the school districts in the state of Minnesota. Personally, I work with about 40 of them.
And with the findings that you find with ours, how, how many would kind of, I don't know if you rank them on how they do or whatnot, but how, how many would rank in where we're at type of thing?
Um, not.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yep, I, I understand what you're getting at. Not very many, I, I don't have a lot where I can actually come and, and present to a board and say, "We did not propose journal entries" or "We did not have any financial reporting issues" that way. So there again, you know, the caliber of your business office makes a, a big difference there.
So just hats off to Colleen and Andy and anybody else that we're missing in your department. This is a 104-page document that we get and it's very impressive to hear that, so thank you.
Yeah, for those of us who have been here for a while, just standing now. Colleen here. Just the next year.
But I mean, that's exceptional, that's exceptional.
It's been this way every single year, so, and, and it's, it's easy to see why. It's in that front row over there, so thank you, Colleen.
In the back row.
Back row, sorry, sorry, Andy.
She's back there.
You've only been here a few years.
Talking about Bill or Andy.
Are you talking about Bill or Andy back there?
Sorry, I should have just stopped, I'm too far. Any other questions? Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Neil, thanks.
All right, so this then brings us to item 8B2, youth liaison program agreement between City of Faribault and ISD 656.
Includes a 3% increase over last year, I think is the only change.
Yep, for our youth liaison officers.
And that's recommended by the city as part of their negotiation.
Do we need to approve that? Do we need to make, send an action item?
It is, yeah.
Oh, sorry, my, my bad, yep, sorry, action item.
Another great catch.
There she is.
Forget that I said anything about item 8B2. We're still on item 8B1, we need to take action on this report. I will entertain a motion to adopt the 2014-2015 audit report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now, item 8B2, youth liaison program agreement between the City of Faribault and ISD 656. There is an increase of 3% as suggested by the city with their contract negotiations. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, just one question.
Yeah.
The city's on the 12-month calendar, are they different than ours, right?
Yes.
They're not on a fiscal calendar?
Correct.
That's why this is coming up now and not in July or June or sometime?
We usually get it in the fall.
Okay, that's because their budget starts in January. Thank you.
Okay, and so this brings us to item 8B3, school nutrition programs joint agreement with Nurse Stand Charter School. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. This brings us to item 8B4, Title I independent contractor agreement. Todd, do you want to tell us a little bit of what, what that is?
Yep, the part of our federal Title I financial commitment is towards the private schools. If they wish to use some of the funding that we have, that's just part of the federal law. And in this case, it's $3,277. Whoa, I better get the exact, yeah, $3,727 per month for the nine-month period for this particular dollar. And they, they kind of dictate what they use those dollars for, we just have to be the fiscal agent for the money.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. This brings us to 8B5, Health Finders Collaborative Agreement for Youth Development Facilitator. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion on this item?
I don't know if Anne Marie wants to speak, but it's a unique opportunity, we have to share a position, if you want us to be grateful for that.
Please do.
Sure, we have an existing staff person who is our youth development facilitator and by chance, we've struck an agreement with Health Finders to pay half of their salary and benefits for that position. That person will work with youth after school, in school, different opportunities around, related kind of to the achievement gap as well as the enrichment gap.
Who is that person calling?
We have a coordinator who is Eric Samberg, and this person works side, side by side with Eric. And her name is Kim Pozuelos.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this item? If members serves me, I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. The middle school theater budget proposal. Todd, do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, right now, a lot of the, well, they are, they were. The drama instructors or advisors were creating their own plays and, and writing up their own plays for, for their performances. So if you can imagine that, it's quite a task. So they would like to not do so much of that anymore and pay for the copyright of some of these plays that are out there. And we're suggesting that that's a good idea.
And Ken spoke to you before, they had sort of disabsorbed these costs, or recently when they started doing this in the activities budget, but he'd like to have a separate line item for this budget, for this item going forward.
Seems to be a fairly reasonable cost to me as I look at it.
Well, and you look at the success of LeWakka last year for childcare, and all the students participating and attendance at that, probably.
Yeah, many, many kids are involved in that, I think it's money well spent. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. This brings us to McKinley, Early Childhood Special Education Paraprofessional Request. So Todd, I'm going to ask you to say a little bit about this.
Yeah, there's, this is based on an IEP for one of the learning plans for one of the kids in the ECSE program, and we're just asking to add additional help with the paraprofession.
Will, um... Will any of this, this cost be reimbursed to us?
Rob, is it still about 60% outlet?
Any typicals?
Yeah, typically, costs for special education are reimbursed about a rate of 55%. So they'll go through the normal special education, well, normal, the special education funding formula, and we will get some reimbursement back for that, yes.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Rob, I have a question for you, is it possible, just when, when you summarize these requests and whatnot, that you just add that as a separate line on there that how much will likely be reimbursed?
Yeah, I think you've just short-circuited the question to be a little...
If possible.
That's no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. All right, I don't believe I've done a motion to approve, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, McKinley Paraprofessional Request, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. We also have in front of us a DECA proposal, DECA operation, operating budget. Todd, would you say a little bit about that?
Yeah, Chad and Vette, feel free to chime in. The $5,000, there are materials that we have that exceed what a current budget is because we have so many kids involved in the program now. And we also would like to pay for an additional coach, for some extra help for those kids. So the total is about $5,000 of extra cost for the district, is that accurate?
Well, there was two proposals, actually, one was for $5,000 for, for this operating budget. Then there was an additional potential $1,500 for the assistant coach, but I think Colleen and Nicole were maybe looking into some, is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
That is accurate, and I believe that the salary for the coach is closer to about $2,200. So $5,000 for the DECA supplies and travel and whatever else they needed for operating, and then about another $2,200 for the second assistant coach.
And, and so that I'm clear, that's an increase to a current budget?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the current budget approximately?
Oh, gosh, I don't know, it's not very much.
About $8,000, so this is a...
Yes, yeah, but he's grown.
Huge program.
Oh, it's huge, yeah, I think he has over 80 kids in the program.
Yeah, it's got lots and lots of kids involved.
And they're, and they're having to pay out of pocket if they want to do some of these events. So this will help alleviate that a little bit, they'll still have to pay a good chunk of what they need to do, but it allows him to get the kids to the competitions and...
Yeah, he's, I thought he said about 82 or 88 is the number that strikes me.
Eighty-two, two-four, yeah.
He thought he could get it up over 100. And one of the biggest issues were these kids could participate, but then when it's time to hit the major performance at the end of the year, the state competition or the regional competition, there's a sizable chunk that just simply couldn't afford it. So then they can't go to it. You work all year to get to a certain level and then it's, it's over without being able to compete and present, so.
Yeah, I've heard nothing about, good things about the program, and that is a lot of kids to be involved, so again, I think money well spent. If members serves me, again, I don't have a motion or a second, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the DECA request?
So moved.
Is there a second, a motion and a second? Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. The construction finance report. It's a report, who's going to report?
Colleen, go ahead. She made this spreadsheet that's pretty easy to read now.
Okay, so you've seen this before, I think, although it's changed slightly based on the last work session. So if you'll look, one, two, three, fourth and fifth column, that used to just be a contingency column, now it's divided into two different categories. So we've got the cost paid by owner and then the change orders. And based on the work session dollar amounts that you talked about adding to the budget, then I've updated those budget amounts that are in the top line for the FEC and the district office. That's really the only change to the document, other than adding payments that we've made to date.
Are there any further questions for Colleen on this?
What happened to the additional pond costs, did that go away?
I believe so.
I think he was pretty confident it was done when he presented it.
Yes.
So change orders are sitting pretty low at this point.
Right, so moving on to item 10, the change order report is also in front of us this evening. And that's what you were asking about, are there, there were some pond costs that we thought were going to be there, or?
Yeah, from the city, but they backed off the way it sounded. All of a sudden, they come up with costs after the fact saying, "By the way, you owes money and no..."
Where, where was the pond going, is that at the middle school or?
Yeah, they needed to make it bigger, it's just a drainage pond, but...
Where's the drainage pond at the middle school, about across the road by the soccer complex?
Correct.
Yep.
That's the drainage pond?
Mm-hmm.
It's done, we're not paying for it, so.
We're not paying for it.
It's in the denied section, so.
I see it in the denied, we won't go further, I guess, okay.
Go ahead, Chad.
Any further questions on these two items? All right, hearing none, we will move along then, thank you, Colleen. To item 8C, the enrollment report. It looks like our numbers are holding very steady at this point in the year. Any questions on that? And that brings us to the comparative financial report. Any questions on that item this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move along then to item 8C3, Resolution 1609, Acceptance of Gifts and Donations. Just one small one this evening from the Jenny O'Turkey store in the amount of $45 for sponsorships of Students of the Month program. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1609.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, it is a resolution, so Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chan.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, passes 6-0.
Thank you very much, and as always, thank you to Jenny O'Turkey store and to all those who donate their time and resources to the school district. This brings us to other committee reports, there's no insurance report this evening, Wellness Committee, Anne Marie.
Okay, at our last wellness meeting, we adopted our latest version of the Employee Wellness Plan for the year, and it looks similar to last year, just revised some of the areas based on some feedback from the staff survey. So we're still going to be offering an incentive, this is all employee wellness funds that come back to us through health insurance, which I'm going to leave to Colleen if you have questions about. I don't, I don't know that part of it. But in terms of the incentive, if you, you purchase a wellness-related item or participate in an activity, there's a $25 reimbursement that you can get, which has been very popular in the past two years, so we're going to do that again. What's kind of new and different is we're possibly going to put out a Pinterest page or some sort of page that has organized information around healthy recipes and fitness tips and those kinds of things, so. It's a very creative group, it's a very good group. Health-related magazines will be ordering for the different schools as well, so teachers can enjoy, teachers and all other staff can enjoy those magazines and look at ideas for themselves. And we're going to be talking at the next meeting about our student wellness plan and maybe coming up with something similar for the students. So that's it.
And we're hoping you can extend counsel, though.
Yes.
Give us ideas for that.
Thank you for asking, yeah, great, that's it.
Great, thank you, Anne Marie, which brings us to the Community Ed Report, which is also Anne Marie.
Great, okay. Great, okay, just two things. Uh, we have another good partnership with Saint Olaf, um, with community ed and adult education. We have nine Olies interested over our January term, they're month off, that are interested in educational careers, so they're gonna come to us and participate in after-school, uh, activities and, uh, adult education. So they'll be working directly with our students and teachers to see if they want to become educators, future educators. So that's a really good opportunity. There's some possibility too of working directly at the high school, but we have not, um, cleared that yet with the administration at the high school, so we're pursuing that. Uh, and then just the other piece of really good news, Falcons for Change, uh, is a group out of the middle school. There's about a hundred and twenty kids that work with Brent and Ally, the two counselors there. They, they do monthly service learning kinds of opportunities, and there's about twenty students that are particularly interested in going every month to adult education. And they work in different groups, small groups with this adult students, and, um, work through activities, and the teachers have it all set up. So by the end of the, this activity, this day, the adult students were calling the middle school students teacher. So it was a very effective and nice activity that our stu-, both of our stuts of students got to participate in, so. Just know there's lots of, um, external and internal partnerships that we're creating all the time to maximize student achievement, so. That's it.
Any questions for Ann Marie before she's... I thought about waiting until you sat down to ask any questions.
I think he did that on purpose, but it's okay.
All right, we'll, we'll move along then. Thank you, Ann Marie, appreciate it. This brings us then, uh, there are no facility committee report this evening or special services report. Uh, from Rob, please.
Yes, um, I wanted to give you a brief update on the Minnesota Continuous Improvement Process and our Special Education Advisory Committee. The Minnesota Department of Education uses the Minnesota Continuous Improvement Process to provide schools with a tool for strategic planning and data-driven decision-making. Data gathered by the Department of Education helps special, the special services department identify the needs of our program and helps us plan for improvement. As part of this prod- process, the districts complete file reviews, um, fiscal reviews and participate in Department of Education trainings, and also convene an, uh, special education advisory committees. In regards to file reviews, last year, Faribault Public Schools conducted a file review of twenty special education files and found sixty-three errors in those files. Um, this year is our correction year where we correct those files. We have till May of two thousand sixteen to correct those sixty-three errors, and to date, um, all but one error have been corrected, so we're, we're down to our last file. Um, last week, the special services department held the first of two special education advisory meetings. Um, the committee discussed attracting new members with younger students. Um, our committee has a number of teachers whose students are in the high school and, and they're looking to get off the committee and graduate with their students, so we're gonna look for some, um, some new parents or parents with younger children in special education. Um, we decided that in the spring, in conjunction with our meeting, we'd, um, bring in a speaker to talk about social security and guardianship for students who are entering adulthood. Um, and also, outside of our meeting, we're gonna work on creating folders to hand out to students who are transitioning into, um, it's when the students enter high school, um, what transition services look like and what community, um, services, um, are accessible after high school. So when they graduate, they'll have a folder of information with, with resources that they can, they can utilize for students with disabilities. I also wanted to follow up on some other items that the boards recently discussed. Um, the Minnesota Department of Education assigned a district number to the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. It's, it's six zero nine four dash five two. It just rolls off the tongue. So we can officially start planning the transition for that next summer.
Do you know, just, just, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Jerry, were you, was Jerry going to be on that board? I don't remember if we did.
We haven't talked about that.
We haven't talked about that yet, so we gotta...
We can officially talk about that now. But yes, um, the board will be made up of superintendent.
Those in favor.
Yep. The board will be made up of the superintendent, uh, uh, one superintendent from each district and, uh, one board member from each district. Um, I assume that we're gonna go with the superintendents who are currently, uh, employed with the district, um, but we'll have to choose a board.
Oh, he's really putting pressure on you.
We'll still have to determine a board member. Um, and also, um, Cheryl Hall, the director of Northfield, and I will be the ex officio, um, advisors to the committee as we, as we move forward. Um, another thing we discussed was our...
Seriously, is there a timeline for this that we should consider? I mean, when would you want to?
It was just approved last Wednesday with the board number, so we'll be...
Maybe in December we can get that down as a board rep and put that as a, a, that should be timed up.
Well, it would seem like it would be one of those items that in January we look at every year.
Oh, sure, at the organizational meeting, yes.
I don't know if we should wait until January for the first time or not, that would be a question for Rob.
We're probably gonna start pl- having our first meeting.
So we could select somebody at, at any meeting then, uh, for before that, but then in January, I think on an annual basis, it should be on that list of items that we, uh, we assign people to. Yeah. I mean, it won't be much of a discussion.
And the Department of Human Services approved our children's therapeutic services and support application for CREC. Um, this will allow us to third-party bill for the, um, mental health services that Fernbrook has been providing our students. Um, they did date it retroactively to July of two thousand and fifteen, so we'll be able to recoup the, some of the costs that we've already expended, um, having Fernbrook work with our students. So that's good news as well. But the person who, who, um, actually approves it, she, she got pneumonia right after her application was turned in, so we had to wait a little bit for her to get better and get back to work. And so she's back and our, our application was approved, so. Any questions before I sit down?
Rob learns quickly.
I'm trying.
Are there any questions for Rob? All right, thank you, Rob. Uh, and this brings us then to other matters, uh, approval of World's Best Workforce Plan.
Good evening. So as Colleen had mentioned in the curriculum report, we did meet as a curriculum advisory, uh, committee to talk about the World's Best Workforce and moving forward with the plan. And hopefully you all had a chance to look at that nice document that Todd sent you, um, this morning. Um, I don't know if it's gonna project it. It's not gonna project, okay.
Don't have anything to show, Todd?
Okay. Well, it's on our website, so if you go to the website and go to teaching and learning, it's under that tab. And what it shows is, uh, the comprehensive document that outlines how we as a district are meeting the five goals that are assigned per statute, which are making sure all students are ready for kindergarten, making sure all students achieve grade-level literacy by the end of third grade, closing all achievement gaps, having students' career in college ready, and having all students graduate from high school. So as you can see on the document, you can see all of the subcomponents of the policy as well as all of the things that we currently do in the district to meet those subcomponents of the policy. And, um, every year we have to submit a summary document to the district or to the state as well. Thanks, Drew. And you can see on there all of the, the bulleted points to the side, and if you click on any one of them, it'll show the documentation of what things that we are currently doing to meet those pieces of the policy. And it's a interactive document as well as a fluid document, so over the course of the year, if we feel like there's something else that we're doing that we didn't have there, we certainly update it and make sure it's a live document over the course of the year.
Is there any timelines? Like, like was No Child Left Behind, there was timelines?
So the, the official timeline that the state requires us to do is to constantly be looking at it and constantly be interacting with the document. But on the first of December, we have to send a, a canned template that shows how we did in terms of those five goals the state assigned to, uh, to every district. As far as the timelines, kind of loosely said that it should be approved sometime around the fall, and then you just constantly relook at the document itself and adjust as need be.
Is this a state or federal government?
It's a state. It's a state, mainly.
Now, what's the connection, if there is anything, with Common Core?
I, I would say there's really not a connection. It's just some of the five main things that the state's trying to push for, that the, all, all districts in the state have goals aligned towards, mean those five bulleted points. So in terms of Common Core, I would say there's really no connection. The state requires that we have rigorous standards, et cetera, but the ways we align to the World's Best Workforce, I'd say there's not one.
So the state developed the standards, not the Feds?
The, the state, we use our state standards for this, yes.
And they developed their own? Or was it from the Feds?
Well, this is, this is a, the waiver component that we got for No Child Left Behind. And so if the state gets the waiver, then they're responsible for coming up with a document that we have to develop that includes the goals. And this is the document that the state came up with in order for us to be.
And this is approved by the federal?
Well, it's not...
Is this approved?
The, well, the, the one, we got a waiver on the federal one, so we don't have to do that. So this is our own state document that, um, they have approved in lieu of being in compliance with EC, ESEA or no job.
And I just wanna clarify that Minnesota has adopted the Common Core when it comes to reading, but it has not adopted the Common Core when it comes to math. And the Common Core are truly just the standards. It, it is the standards that, um, that we, we teach at each grade level. And it's only in the area of reading. The World's Best Workforce is a document that we have to produce to the state that illustrates how we're working towards those five goals that Phil has already explained.
Because you're seeing that the standard, by third grade, they should know how to read. Is that...
That is the goal of the state of Minnesota, that by third grade, all students will read. It's, they have a, the law, Read Well by Third Grade, in which we have to... You'll see within that document, um, we have to have a literacy plan that shows and demonstrates how every student, um, is moving towards read, you know, reading by third grade and what are we gonna do when they don't. So you'll see the interventions in that Read Well by Third Grade report that's embedded in that World's Best Workforce document. Um, so that is, that is the goal of the state of Minnesota.
Now, does this apply to our newcomers academy?
This would apply to all third graders, yes. However, the state, if you have the conversation with the state, you will realize that when, when you're talking about newcomers and the re-, and discussing the research, you will know that it takes at least five years to acquire, um, the language. And so the Read Well by Third Grade, um, is an interesting law.
Are there more questions for Phil or Colleen?
Well, again, we appreciate the work that you put into this and the curriculum committee's input is a big project, so thank you very much. It looks like it's very interactive and people can access it on...
I think the cool part of this plan is that the number of fingers that are in the plan, of course, Phil and, and Colleen have done a major role gathering the data from all kinds of folks who had their, their, their fingers in the plan. And so that makes it pretty, a very, very sound plan.
Yeah, and I, I would stress, there were some nice conversations at the, the curriculum committee about what those goals were and how we were gonna measure those goals and, and trying to make sure they were realistic, and we had great input from, from teachers in the room as well, that they were realistic goals for us, and, and, um, I thought it was a great discussion leading into this document. So thank you, Phil, for, for heading this up. I know it's been a tremendous amount of work, so thank you very much. Um, any further questions for Phil or Colleen? As Phil says. All right, um, I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the World's Best Workforce Plan.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Um, and that brings us, uh, to consider approval of the Faribault Athletics Coaches Handbook. Um, and somehow in the middle of that discussion, I got away from my agenda, so... Todd, do you wanna say something about this? I don't know.
Yeah, we just, uh, the handbook was approved, but then we looked, looking through it, we wanna make sure that the description of the new activities director matches with what we are going to, uh, be hiring here in the next, uh, piece, so we wanted to make sure we make that change first. The other thing that I think, um, if you're okay with this, I'd like to advise Nicole, just to take that piece out of the handbook. I really think it should belong into HR when you talk about job descriptions and things like that. So even though the job description matches just fine in the handbook, I think to take it another step and pull it completely out actually makes more sense. So if you're okay with that, with that adjustment on that, that approval process.
So can we be specific about what, what we're removing? Um, I have it in front of me now. Um, what section is this?
I think it's, is it page seven? Look on, if you look at the, I have to go back there and check it out.
Is it your qualifications?
Yeah, it's in the...
The activities, staff responsibility, activities director, is that what we're looking at? Qualifications, duties, and responsi-, yeah, so. Page seven on to page eight. All, all of that we would like to, to take out, is that an accurate description?
Almost there.
And then I guess I would ask the follow-up, should then, if, if that belongs with HR, should, uh, the head coaches and advisors, should that belong in HR?
Yeah, we think that all of it should be within HR.
So not just...
Yep, so page seven, eight. All the way through page, um, there, it stops at just the top of page eleven.
Do you know, have you had any conversation with Ken why that's included or why he felt the need to include that? For all of that?
No, I, I think he just felt that, that they wanted to have it within the activities department, so I don't think there's any rhyme or reason. He, if he knew that it would go to HR, he'd probably be just fine with it going to HR, too.
So, um, I, I'm fine with that aspect of it, that, that much of this belongs in, in HR. I'm wondering if some of it is, you know, if this is a coach's handbook, so it's for a coach to look at. What I like about something being in here is that a coach can look at this and know what they should be able to expect from their activities director.
That's true.
And if we take all of this out of there, I'm not sure that there's anything, you know? So I'm not sure that this should be what's in here, but it does feel like a coach should be able to know, what is it I should be able to expect from my activities director? And some statement about what's expected of me as a coach, um...
Should be my job expectations or...
So, so it might not be this detail, um, if this is really sort of, uh, uh... You, so, so I'm not sure where to go with that, except for, uh, I'm not sure, uh, that all of this should go or if something should be rewritten and this should go into, uh...
But seems to...
What should be here and what should be in HR, I guess I'm...
Mm-hmm. And maybe I'm looking at this wrong. It seems to me that duties and responsibilities should maybe be in here because that's what you're expecting from your coaches and whatnot. Your job qualifications, to me, would maybe be in HR because you can't get hired by HR if you don't meet those qualifications. I don't know, maybe that's too simple.
And we can examine it. It, it's, as Nicole has written here, it fits for our needs, correct? So if you want to have us go and research it a little bit more and pull out some of those suggestions that you just said, we can go ahead and do that. But if you approve it as is, we're, then we'll be fine, too.
We already approved it, so what we, tonight we would be...
You'd, no, you, this would be a new action. You'd be reapproving this handbook with the new... With the new...
With what's in it.
Yep, yep.
And, and there's a new description for the activities director?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep, that's the change.
And that's why we'd like to adopt something before, um, before we move on to item C.
Yep. It's ba-, the job description is based on the parameters that the board had set for the hiring of this position. And then we didn't know that there was a job description already embedded in the document, so we're just making the changes as the board had directed us. So nothing more than that. So the, the only compromise, not compromise, the only other thing that we could do, we can adopt it as it is right now and we'll be, and we'll be just fine. And then we can go research it, or you can pull the... research it, or you can pull this out and you can put it all towards HR.
So, just so I understand our options, so if we didn't approve anything tonight, then we currently have a handbook that has a job description.
That doesn't match.
That doesn't match what our actual job description is, and that would create a problem.
That's correct.
If we adopted this tonight without any of that, we're fine, because we have a job description, or if we leave this in there, we're fine.
Yes.
Either of those are okay solutions for tonight when we're about to make a hire.
That's correct.
So that we're not inconsistent in two documents in the district. So, are suggestions on leaving it in there or not? I'm not sure what folks feel about it. As a coach, if you asked me, I guess I would, I would just assume leave something in there so I can have, I'm not sure that all of this is what needs to be in there, but I would hate to take it all out, because I think it's a handy thing for me to look at and know what my expectations are for somebody else.
Chad's suggestion with leaving the duties and responsibilities?
Well, and I would, I'll honestly, I would say leave it as is and go back to Ken and ask him, have some correspondence with him of why he felt the need to put that in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I don't want to get into too much editing of, at this moment in a board meeting, and I'm not sure, we can read it well enough to know what should be in here and what shouldn't. So my, just personal suggestion, and mostly honestly, this is as coaching, not as a member of the school board, I just assumed have it left in here at the moment, and then if there's some desire in HR to remove some pieces from this, you can come back to us in another forum or something, something in there, that'd be just fine, too. So that's just my personal opinion, so I'll entertain a motion that anybody would like to make, leaving it in or taking it out.
I'll move that we approve this handbook as is.
We have a motion to approve the handbook as is? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Jason, I'll just go back to, I'll get on my soapbox here, because you give me one more opportunity, too, but on page 12, where it shows the official logo, it just bothers me to no end that we have some coaches, whether it be in particular varsity sports or particular clubs, that go out and use a different logo than the official logo. I just think it doesn't look very classy. We have 23 varsity sports in a lot of other clubs, and if every one of them were able to use their own Falcons logo, I just don't think we have any branding, we don't have any consistency, and if one or two get away with it, where do you draw the line? So I would just like to see, when we pay people to be a coach or we pay them to be an advisor, I would like to see them wear the official Falcons logo.
Can I chime in on that, too?
You sure can.
I agree with Chad, and we did start up our communications committee, and we did start discussing the branding. You weren't around, Chad, what were you talking about? Well, we did have a discussion about branding a couple of years ago, but that was during some of the big cuts, so we actually decided to postpone that, and we've kind of revitalized that right now. At that time, the cost of branding was about $10,000 to do some of the things that we wanted to implement the whole process, but if there's a board member that would like to join us, we would love to have you on board to take a look at some of this. We just started, we had our first meeting last week and just started talking about it and talking about the idea of branding and using some of these ideas that you just stated. So, give me an email if you're interested in doing it, be more than happy to include you in the discussion. It's kind of a fun group, too.
We have a motion and a second. Did we actually vote?
No.
Kathy is nodding her head up and down like we did.
No.
We did a motion and a second.
I'm motion.
We do have a motion and a second. That's what we were, that's what we were nodding to, okay.
Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the handbook as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This brings us then to item 10C, Consider Approval of the 2015 to 17 Employment Agreement for Daniel DeShane, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Activities Director. Todd, would you just like to tell us a little bit about Daniel as he enters the district?
Yeah, it was, just to back up a little bit, the process went very well. Thank you for all the committee members and all the applicants and the people that we interviewed. It was a very good process, and at the very end, we are, we selected as a committee that Daniel DeShane is who would bring to the school board for Activities Director. Have you, have I sent his resume out yet? I probably should do that. I'd like to do that, too, so you can kind of get a feel of who this person is. We're going to email that out, but I don't think we did. But he comes with some good athletic background, some marketing background. He comes from a, one of his schools that he came from was a private school, very, like a boarding school, a Shaggy-type school, where he actually ran part of the athletic program and also the tuition piece that comes with the athletic programs. So he comes with a very nice resume, but most of all, when we interviewed him, we thought as a person, he was very genuine and very motivated, and we felt he would take our activities program to another level. So we're very happy with the, with Daniel, so.
Excellent.
Todd, he is a fairable grad.
And he is a fairable grad, yep. I don't remember what year it was, but he is a fairable grad.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2015 to 17 Employment Agreement for Daniel DeShane, Activities Director. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I got a strange email from a group. There's no name on it, you know, personal name, and there had some questions about, you know, why, you know, not a certified teacher, and then you should start this person at starting salary for a beginning teacher. You know, I didn't pass it on to anybody, because there was no physical name on that, so.
Sure.
And it's something about, if I remember, no coaching, or, did he do coaching or something? I don't know where they got their facts, like you said.
Right.
When they don't sign their name to it, I just delete it.
Yep. Yeah, we used the parameters that, you remember when you had, it was Jerry and Chad, you asked them to come to develop the parameters for us to look at the possibility of the candidates that we were going to be interviewing.
But Todd, it was Jerry, myself, and you, and Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Turtle, and Nicole as well, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was five of us that went in there. And then based on those parameters, we didn't, we said coaching preferred, and we said administrative experience preferred, but it wasn't the deciding factor for hiring this person. We were trying to hire the person that we felt fit the best in that situation, so. And I think we had about 25 folks that were doing the interviewing, so it was a very vetted process and.
It was important, no, it wasn't just coaching, it was experience, it was some kind of
Supervisory.
Supervisory activities, experience in fine arts as well, so it wasn't just coaching, it wasn't just athletics.
And he has a master's in sports management, which is also, I mean, it's a very high credential , too, to have.
Well, it's one of these jobs where what's an appropriate credential is a little more nebulous than many other positions we have, so.
Right.
Which in some way allows you to hire someone that could have, you know, a good approach to the position or an energetic approach to the position.
And they're not going to do any teaching, so it doesn't require a teaching license.
Right. And they're not coaching.
And they're not coaching.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? I believe we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Oh, item 10D, I meant to be in our work session. Can we table that to the work session? Somebody wants to talk about it now. It was a board leadership discussion, am I looking at this? I didn't, I didn't catch that that was on here. It wasn't my intent to have that tonight, I meant to have it at our next work session.
I thought it was the MSBA Leadership Meeting that you had.
No, unless, unless somebody else wants to have this discussion, it is on the agenda. I meant for us to have a discussion about the board leadership that are at December, it's actually next week, but.
Do you need a motion to table it?
What was that?
Do you need a motion to table it?
It's just a discussion, so we can consider it discussed. There's no action required. We discussed that, we'll discuss it later, I think it's been discussed, and we'll discuss it at the, so, I don't think we need any motions on that, unless somebody would like to handle that differently. All right, and that brings us to other items of information, starting with our student representative.
Hi.
Hi.
I just had the Fair Bowl Theater troupe just finish up their production of A Hiding We Will Go. The girls swimming finished 11th at state, and soccer finished fourth at state. Everyone's getting excited for Thanksgiving break, as we only have two days of school this week. Student council is starting to prepare for Toys for Tots, kicking it off, kicking it off with Sadie's on, I mean, Saturday the 5th? That's, yeah, it's the 5th. That's the biggest fundraiser for Toys for Tots for the high school. And then the band and orchestra will be having their winter concert on December 7th, Monday, December 7th, and choir concert will be December 14th.
Awesome. Thank you, Hannah. Any questions for Hannah?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Items from school board members.
Mr. Chair, I want the pre-delegate assembly on Saturday, and it looks like they're going to pursue our first two resolutions again, but on the third one, dealing with mental illness, I give that back to Rob and Todd to fine-tune it, because right now they're in opposition to it, because it's too broad, and they're going to fine-tune it, right? Because then we can bring it before the assembly, at least 12 hours before we meet, but it takes a two-thirds majority to do that, which I think there will be.
Yeah, we'll narrow down our focus for it, and then give it to you, and then the delegate does what they want to do with it.
And I guess this session can be a taxi.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, it's a bonding session.
Basically, so a lot of taxes and stuff like that.
Richard, could you remind us what the first two resolutions were?
One is the.
I'm holding on, but I don't know the details.
General formula, inflation factor.
Yep.
Okay, an inflation factor.
Oh, the other one is to eliminate or give, what, three years for the unfunded mandates.
Yep.
Okay, unfunded mandate.
And MSBA supports both of those.
Yes.
So can you walk us newbies through if this passes, you know, what you're talking about?
The delegate now, they got two representatives at MSBA that will, well, they're lobbyists, let's say.
So then they lobby the.
Yeah, then they lobby for it, yeah.
So essentially, this is about our organization, MSBA, deciding what we're going to lobby for.
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes into something called Platform, and then the Platform is.
They will spend the time to lobby, they go around, quite experienced.
Yes.
A lot of experience there, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other items of information from school board members?
I will just add, you're all invited, the Booster Club on Sadie Hawkins Night, so when the parents drop kids off at Sadie Hawkins, they're hosting, we used to host a Fans Meet the Coaches event at Bachelors, we're now changing it to Falcon Fan Night, and there'll still be a lot of coaches there. And then we are also, school board members, you're invited to, the morning of December 11th, we're bringing in our third motivational speaker to the middle school and the high school. It's a young lady by the name of Tasha Schu, she's about 30 years old or so, and it's a young lady, when she was 16 years old, she fell through a, the trap door in a theater stage, and she is now quadriplegic, and so she's coming to give a motivational talk and presentation to the middle school and high school students, so you're all invited to join, if you'd like to.
Thank you very much, Chad. Any other items of information from school board members? All right, Mr. Superintendent.
I did go to the performance, Hiding We Will Go, and Paul Johnson's production, the kids and the staff did a great job with that, and it's a very good play. I hadn't seen a thriller, I guess, for a play at a high school setting, and they did a great job with it, with a good little sense of humor, too. I'm also part of the MASA advocacy group, federal advocacy group, and as the federal government is reauthorizing ESEA, which is basically No Child Left Behind again, we are keeping a close eye on that to make sure that it becomes more of a local control rather than a federal mandate that comes down, so we're trying to make sure that that is going to go through the way it's supposed to go through. PDS meeting again in Mankato, I was at, and that's a good meeting with the superintendents that are around there, that's our professional development group, that helped start Avid, and some of the TOSSAs and some of the co-teaching that we've been doing right now. It's a good resource for us. And Facility Committee got canceled, we got a little bit behind that. The facility plan is pretty much all finished now, and we'll be showing that at the next Facility Committee meeting. And we also have a couple of ideas that maybe we can save a few dollars with utilities and some of the electrical costs, so we'll bring that to the Facility Committee, too. I wanted to mention that. We haven't forgotten about you, we just got backed up a little bit with everything else that was going on. And other than that, that is about it. Oh, big night superintendent meeting, but been doing a lot of visiting at the schools and checking out teachers, and a lot of good things happening in the district, so, kids too, been at a lot of those events as well. That's it.
All right, thank you very much, Todd. All right, that brings us to some dates to remember. Starting with November 30th, at 5:30 PM, will be a work session at the district office. December 2nd will be the Wellness Committee meeting at the district office at 3:30. December 7th, at 7:30 AM, will be the Finance meeting in the district office. December 7th, at 3:30 PM, will be the Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting in the district office. December 8th, at 4:30 PM, will be the Policy Committee meeting in the district office. And December 14th, at 5:30 PM, will be our regular board meeting right back here at City Hall Council Chambers. And with that, then, we come to item 12, our closed session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn our open session and reopen and close session.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.